Good evening. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We note that all council members are present. Our opening ceremony tonight, we'll turn to Councilmember Lars Norfield. Will everyone please rise with me and repeat the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple of different groups here tonight, some scouts. And I've invited, I think there's two different groups. And so, we'll start with one on the second row there first. And if you'll come up and remember your troop number, what you're working on, and your school. And if you'll speak into the microphone right there.
So my name is Erin Sleep, and I go to Orchard Elementary. And I'm working on citizenship in the community. And what I need to do is, I need to ask someone here today, what's being done about an issue, and how young people can help.
Okay, well, we'll meet with you right after. We'll make sure that... It's what? Oh, and your troop number.
Oh, and my troop number is 703.
All right. And then, the third row?
We're Troop 1034. We're also working for citizenship in the community. A few of our schools are Orchard Elementary, Hunter Junior High, Matheson Junior High, Monticello Academy, Westlake Junior High, Westlake Elementary. And then, we live in...
Oh, that's fine. Just your school. Okay. And I think that was all the scouts.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Could I just explain to the scout, we'd be happy to meet with you after the meeting, but our meeting has an agenda that's hosted, and we can't go off of that agenda and discuss things. So, we have to do that after the meeting. So, we're not putting you off. We just have to follow the rules. Okay? Thank you.
I thought we saw an elected official here from the state, but... Oh, she had to leave. Okay. With that then, we go to the minutes of April 3rd. Motion from the council on the minutes. Any discussion? See no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, the minutes approved. Now we go to our public comment period. Our public comment period. Now, I believe that a number of people signed up. And just to make sure, if you're here to speak about the 5450 West issue, don't use the public comment period. We will hold a separate public comment. And that's set up so that we'll have you speak directly to that. This general public comment is literally, anyone who wants to speak on any issue they want for up to five minutes. And it is not a discussion or question and answer. It's just your chance to share your views with the council. Okay? And that goes back to the comment made to the scout. Because if you're discussing an issue that's not on our agenda, we have to be very careful not to start a discussion on that issue. Because by state law, we're prohibited from doing that. And that's to protect the public, that we discuss an issue not on our agenda that they would want to weigh in. It's just a protection put in for the public to make sure that whatever we do is known to everyone ahead of time. So that they can weigh in on that issue if they want. So, with that then, our public comment period. I'm going to go down through these. I think Mr. Nichols? Okay. J. Christof... Christopher?
5450.
5450. Jesse DeOrtega?
Right here. Not on 5450. My name is Jesse DeOrtega. I am here today because I have a concern about a railway horn. Where I live, the horn that is closest to our location is on 6400 West and about 4300 South. I have lived in this house for 31 years. Moved in in 1987. And at that time, for about the first 15 years, we had periodic train horns. This railway is located directly across the street from me. And it runs along the backside of the house. It's directly across the street from me. For the first 15 years, we had occasional train horn blowing. It was no big deal. It occurred once or twice a week. And it would occur any time of the day. It has since picked up in the last 18 months. It is going at least three times a week. And it's going at 1:30 in the morning and 3:30. Give or take 30 minutes each time. Twice a night, three nights a week. And it wakes us up out of a dead sleep. Earplugs, sleeping pills, believe me. And I've had a $2,000 estimate on window replacement for this, just for one room. I have spoken with Union Pacific. Union Pacific says they no longer use this line. They have leased it to two short railways, Savage-Bingham and Utah Central. We... I have taken pictures of our crossing located near our house. I've spoken with Russ Willardson, and I'm not sure if that's an individual that's here tonight or not. Spoken with him on bi-phone. I have brought with me Quiet Zone rules. I have talked with the FRA. I would love to do anything I can to help you implement this and find out what can be done. We all feel that the decibel level is much higher than is actually authorized by the FRA, which should be 96 to 110 decibels. And believe me, this horn is much higher than that. The crossing arms and the lights are not being used. And I don't know why taxpayers have already paid for that, but it's not being utilized. I know there's a Quiet Zone rule that makes it a half mile long. And there is an additional crossing zone that is about a half a mile away that has no safety measures. And Mr. Willardson told me that it would be $400,000 to $500,000 to implement a Quiet Zone. I would like to know what those costs entail and where I got those budget numbers. Granted, we're just Googling things, but crossing arms don't cost $400,000 to $500,000. And we've already got them at our crossing arm. We'd like to know when they were put in, why they're not utilized, and if there's something that the city can do to help us. I have brought one neighbor with me tonight. I can bring many, many more. I have tagged many neighbors within a zone. I've brought a map. There's what I call a wake-up zone. And these people within five houses either direction can be woken up from a dead sleep. I haven't finished knocking on doors. And I am happy to help you any way I can, get the funding for it. I will... I can get petitions. I will bring people. And I am like a dog with a bone. And I am very tired. So, whatever the city can do to help us with this, I would appreciate. And if there's anyone I can leave information with, I will do it. Because I've brought everything you need.
Conclude your presentation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Dorothy Taylor?
I didn't expect to be up here, but anyway. Yeah, I'm Dorothy Taylor, and I live over on 4300 South, 3150 West. I've been there for 40-some years. And it used to be a good neighborhood. Still pretty much is. But I just noticed through the years how things have really gone downhill. And I know West Valley has a 12-element good neighborhood. What makes a good neighborhood? My question is, why are they not enforced? If you have them? Now, I've heard they are, but sometimes they pick and choose on who they're enforcing it on. In my area, there's like 10 that I know of that are in violation of these codes. And nothing is done. And it really makes the neighborhood look kind of trashy. Also, renting homes. Me, this is a... Why... Why the... Maybe my question is, could there be a code or a law that you can only rent so many in a neighborhood? Because they rent these homes, or they rent rooms out or bedrooms, and they have like six or seven cars parked there. They park on the street, they park on the driveway, they park on their lawns, everywhere. There's supposed to be a 30% front yard finished in landscaping, but there definitely is not in some of these areas. And, let's see, what else? Two, most of the cities all have a code where big trailers can have to be parked behind that side of the home so that they're in the back of that front of the house. We have several that's parked out in front of the homes. And they almost go clear to the sidewalks. So it makes it difficult to find and see when you're driving, pull out. Also, going out in my subdivision, in the summer, along 2700 West, the weeds get pretty high. And, you know, if they could just keep these cut down and make it a little bit more presentable and easier to pull out of the subdivision. So, anyway. And then, also, it's getting pretty difficult to pull out of the one-mile road because of the cars that's parked on there. Sometimes you have to wait for another car to go through. And sometimes you can't even get through. And I just think, why can't they park in their driveways? And a lot of the reason is, too, I think, because there's so many families living in those homes. Why are these one-twelve family homes that have several families living in them? Anyway, these are just some of my concerns with what's happening with our city here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Julaine Fisher?
Thank you for accommodating my temporary disability. I am Julaine Fisher. I live at 3760 South, 5450 West, on an acre of land.
Are you here to speak on the zoning change there?
I have.
Okay. What we will do, if it's okay, we're going to hold your comments for a few minutes because that's a separate hearing.
I didn't know I was going to finish that.
Okay.
Okay, I thought so.
Okay, so, we'll come back to you, if that's okay. We'll finish up this... We have to do an introduction on that. I'm sorry I didn't catch that before. Okay. Thomas Jackson? Not on 5400 West?
Don. I'm Don Jackson, member of the Salt Lake County Bicycle Advisory Committee under Ben McAdams. I attended the open house on 41st South Reconstruction recently, along Lars Norfield. I still have some questions about the project. Until recently, 3900 South and 41st South were designated as east-west bike routes from Wasatch Boulevard to 8400 West. It's the only street in the valley east-west, the only street in the entire valley that has no freeway interchanges. Ideal for cyclists. I guess you know where I'm going with this. I hope you would agree that cycling is a small part of solving congestion and air pollution problems. There's currently cyclists that use 41st South as a commuting road. By constructing the street, speeds will increase, and cycling deaths will result. Remember your campaign pledge. Safety is my number-one priority. What I don't understand, the road is being widened for utilities, landscaping, mailboxes, and a parking strip. My question for the mayor, why does the city use public money to provide people to park their private cars? Instead, public bike lanes should be constructed on public roads. Finally, do you know that the life expectancy in West Valley is about two years lower than east-side communities like Sandy? Well, one of the factors to living longer is an active lifestyle that most cities have built in their infrastructure. So my last question for the mayor, how do you plan on improving life expectancy in West Valley?
Does that complete your presentation?
Yes. Are you going to...
I'm prohibited by state law from bringing this issue up. We explained that earlier. We cannot discuss issues without having the public notice, which requires a minimum of 24 hours. What we will do, and I'll take this opportunity now since we're almost through, these issues that are brought up, we bring them back to the council. And if they need to be addressed, we will add them to our agenda for the following week during our study session. But no, we will not discuss them here in accordance with the law. Okay? Thank you. That was Thomas Jackson. So, Kelly Bertas?
Thank you. I'm a frequent flyer here. Kelly Bertas, 5954 West, sign a circle. I don't know where to start. I don't know why you guys would even want to be in this position after attending your meeting earlier. I'm totally disgusted. I'm disgusted the way the city even runs. One fact is, why do we have city managers or city planners here fighting for high density in an area? You know what? We've got to be worrying about crime. We've got to be worrying about traffic. Things like that, there's a major problem going on right now. Instead of bringing in more high-density areas in a heavy-traffic area, that is totally stupid. I don't get it. And to have a city paying somebody to promote this. This is wrong. You guys working for us, the city people, who pay your wages or the city taxes. I was totally shocked. And to see some of this stuff that you guys are bringing up. And then you talk about adding more junk down on 21st by allowing this zoning change to bring in more composting, whatever materials, of concrete and asphalt. What's air quality going to be? We've already got ET technologies. We've got the landfill. What is that doing to us? It stinks like heck half the time. Yes, I know you're working on it, and you know the difference between ET, but the landfill stinks too. And yet, you're building all these buildings. You know, you shut down Rocky Mountain Grace Way because of the noise, you quieted it down. That was a great facility. And what did it go to? Commercial building. It's all about the dollar. You know what? I'm sorry, this place was all here before you come to city. You know, I'm disgusted with West Valley. And you know from the past year and a half why. And most of mine is my next-door neighbor that you reallowed her to split this zoning of their yard, which these poor people are here for anyway, to build more housing in small areas. And you know what? You've sold this, let them sell this piece of property with no utilities, none. And this man is moving his stuff in. This is wrong. Most of us, you have to have permits. You have to have utility. You have to have all kinds of stuff before you can move into a home. But yet, because there was a building structure on this property, now this guy can take ownership and move stuff in there? This is ludicrous. And this is not right. Where is your guys that are going around and finding people? Because I know they do. They find my neighbor because he has a semi truck in his yard behind a fence. If I would have seen an officer or your guys coming in here, I ought to drop him for trespassing, for one thing, and have him arrested. You don't have no right to come in people's yards and ticket people with stuff like that. But yet, you allow this kind of garbage going on? I'm sorry. You know how upset I can get. And street parking, I'm glad you brought that up. I've been bringing that up for a year and a half. A street is a highway. That's for cars. Driveways are parking lots. It's not a parking lot on a road. Now, I've told you numerous times, you can't even get a fire truck down mine sometimes because of that. I got pictures on my phone coming out of here tonight. And I got a dual truck, and I had a heck of a time getting through it. Now, this is wrong, folks. You know what? If these guys got this many cars, tear up some lawn and pave in some driveway. You say you can't park on bare ground, but you let them park on their lawns and you let them park on the sidewalks and on top of this stuff. And when she said boater homes and RVs, yes, I have that on my yard. They go right up to the sidewalk. And we allow this stuff. We don't spend enough money on our EMS. And I will promote that as fast as I can say. To just get them an ambulance, a couple fire trucks, we need to step up to the plate. Because you know what? This stuff, normal car, wear out in 100,000 miles. And these things are going hundreds of thousands of miles. This is life safety, and we're running on antiques. This is stupid, and this is crazy. We're one of the, we're second-largest city, and yet, we don't take care of our public services as far as fire and PD. That's why we got so much crime. We need to step up and quit worrying about the high-density stuff. Take care of the problems we have in this city. And it starts with each one of you guys. And you do not allow anybody talking on here. And you don't get answers next door. Because you never talk about it.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in our public comment period? Other than 5450 West? See no further comments there? Then we'll close that. And let's see. Next, we have city manager comments?
Thanks, there are no comments.
City council comments? Okay. Well, let me go down through the items. And so, there was the railway horn issue. Do you want that on for our next study meeting agenda?
That's something we haven't heard before.
Yeah. So, let's add that to the list for next week. Then there was issues related to code enforcement, parking, weeds, some other issues there.
Renting homes?
Rentals, that was the other one. Rentals.
Single-family building?
Ordinance enforcement, now there's... So let's make note of those. We'll add that to next week. The bike route on 4100 South? We probably ought to talk about that and see where that is, get an update. And then, Mr. Bertas, who always brings us the list. Thank you.
And I have a passion.
Okay. High density in a high-traffic area. And that is being talked about. And will be actually on our regular meeting agenda. It'll get more discussion, I'm sure. 2100 South, that was the other item on our agenda in there. And we will, that's already on there, so... Then, a residential lot used for storage. Let's add that under our ordinance enforcement. And then, parking. I think, did we already have that one on there? Under the ordinance enforcement. And then there was an issue under EMS budgeting. We're going through that right now. We will have budget come up. Do you want to add that specifically onto our agenda this next week? Or we'll include that with our other? Okay. We're already doing budgets. So, I think I got most of those. Okay. So those will be on our study item agenda next week. And we may, in that meeting, talk about them in depth. We may have a report. We may ask for, to go back and do some additional study. Or we may opt to not discuss it. It just depends on where the council feels on that. With that then, that takes care of that on our agenda. Now we go to our public hearings. Our first one is for application GPZ-2-2017, filed by Kenneth Olson. It's a general plan change from rural residential to large lot residential. A zone change from agriculture to residential estate for property at 3755 South, 5420 West. And then authorizing the city to enter into a development agreement. We have three items we will consider. Ordinance 18-03, that's the change in the general plan. Ordinance 18-04, showing the zoning change from A to RE. And then Resolution 18-15, a development agreement on the property. That is the issue before us. There's 3.2 acres there. The proposal is to take that one piece of property, I think, turn it into smaller lots. The proposal was for, I think, eight houses on there.
But we do not have a plat before this.
Yeah.
Just a zoning change.
Yeah, the zoning change. But, once we do the zoning change, then the development is kind of automatic unless we grant an exception.
Or they could go forward and try to plat something that complies with the zone.
Yes.
But we are not considering a plat tonight.
So... And I'll just say, that's the introduction. The developer is requesting those items tonight. Once those are approved though, then as long as they meet the requirements currently in statute for residential estates, they could move forward with that. So, with that introduction then, we'll now open a public input portion or public hearing for this issue. So those of you who had signed up for that will now turn to you and any others who want to speak. We'll start, since they signed up here, we'll just do them in that order. J. Christopher? Or was... Oh, there he is.
I live south of this property, and I'm also involved in it. We are for the zoning change for the simple reason that half-acre lots is ludicrous as far as I'm concerned. It's like mowing a football field every week. The lots would be 100 foot wide, just about 400 feet long. Besides the maintenance that has to go into it, there's a matter of water. I could imagine the water bill, the water of football field. And that's just exactly what you're looking at. I know that in the other meetings that we had here, it was brought up that the neighbors was not happy with the possible zoning change. And that's not quite true. There was a petition brought around to the neighbors. There was nobody that signed that petition. Everybody that lives there except for a couple are for the zoning change. I think it'll improve our street, our neighborhood, and the city. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jolene Fisher.
I'll try again, the right way. Um, I am Jolene Fisher. I live at 3760 South, 5450 West. Um, on an acre of land that belonged to my grandmother, Maude Wilston Booth Evans. It is a privilege for me to live on that property that has been in the Evans family for more than a century. And that my grandparents and their children have farmed. This is a difficult meeting for me because I fully support my cousin, Kathleen Christopher, and our husband, Jay Christopher, in dividing and selling their property. I always knew that my front yard view of horses grazing in their pasture would change, and I accepted that. Um, in fact, my own home is on property where my own horses had a very pampered life. However, I never envisioned the type of development Ken Olson proposes, which would be up to three houses on an acre with the need of a new road to allow access. As for the petition that my cousin-in-law mentioned, I never saw. So, I didn't have a chance to sign it. Um, no. Okay. Um, 5450 West, especially the land Grandma Evans owned from about 3700 South to Amanda Acres is unique in West Valley. It retains a rural atmosphere. It is only a couple blocks from one of West Valley's busiest intersections. Friends tell me that as soon as they turn on our street, they feel calmer, more relaxed. Workmen on the street even comment on its beauty. First-time visitors are amazed that such a street exists in West Valley. Just last week, another Realtor contacted us wanting to buy our property, of course, to resell. Um, we've had many, some already had clients. We know it's a desirable place to live. And let me just mention, uh, of the four siblings, uh, well, children of my grandparents who have property there, none of them has a smaller lot than one half acre. Uh, most have three-fourths of an acre or more. Uh, we do not find it a burden to water, although just for the sake of conservation, we are trying to do more and more, uh, zerescaping. And I have no idea what others would do. Uh, I'm sorry. My eye has never been. Um, not long ago, a young couple that we didn't know asked if they could have their wedding reception in our yard. The bride had walked up our street to get to school for many years and had always promised herself she would get married there. Of course, we were honored to have the reception. Several friends and family have also held receptions and weddings in our yard. The zoning change Mr. Olson requests and the housing development he wants to build would mar the beauty and essence of our portion of 5450 West. Our street would lose much of its charm. Mr. Olson has claimed in the past that his development would create a feeling of community. While that probably is true of the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac he proposes, it would destroy much of the same sense of community and the ambiance our family has been creating for as many as five generations. Obviously, Mr. Olson has spent time and money developing and revising his plans. The Evans family as a whole has spent significant more of both developing our heritage over the decade, decades. Please vote in favor of retaining the unique part of 5450 West, which some consider a small oasis. Instead of in favor of another excuse, I don't mean to insult, run-of-the-mill subdivision. Thank you. And I don't envy you, you're young, but I'm glad you're here. Whatever you decide.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this issue tonight? Okay, it looks like we have several. Okay, so, one here, one to the right, and one in the back.
I have to get my feet moving before I can move. Oh, Rangers, awesome. You can do whatever you want to do. Um, to the young scouts, I'm sorry you wasn't here when they showed the New Years, Japanese, Chinese New Years. Our scouts were here that day, and they have talked about it many, many times. I don't know really what to say. The property that might belong to my grandmother and my mother, and now me, does mean a lot to me. I'm gonna look out, and I'm gonna see different things. Life changes daily. We all change daily. We all have things that we like, things we don't. My dad taught me one time about a book. He says, "You take a book, and two people read that book, and one sees one thing, and one sees something else." No two people see the same thing. Now, Jolene talks about how much this property means to the family. Her dad's house has sold twice. Her brother sold his house. It's still not in the Evans family. It has been a change. And some of that change has been good. The people that have moved in are awesome. I like them. Do I miss my uncle? You bet, my aunt. They were great people. They were kind people. Her brother and his wife and I were very, very close. And when she passed on, I'd go over there to the neighbors, and I couldn't go in the house because it wasn't her house anymore. But I go over there now, and I know she is smiling down on us and saying, "The change is beautiful, and it's nice." And there was a petition taken around, behind my back, to all the neighbors to sign. And they called me and says, "We will back you up." And if you want them to back you up, I can fill this chamber. Because this has been going on since November. Now, if we make the right way, and we fit in, and get everything done that you've asked us to do, then it should pass. It's not, he said, she said, they said. It's if it is right, and they've done their work to do the right thing, then it should pass.
Then there was a gentleman over here.
My name is Ken Olson, thank you for your time. Um, so just a couple of things. As, uh, we were, we were requesting stucco on the sides and rear of the homes as an exception to the ordinance, and we agreed to take that off. Staff said you were okay, most, I mean, it's what you vote on, but worth a 10% as accents only. It's really not too relevant because it's not worth setting up for 10%. So, but, you know, we'll leave it as an option if you're okay with that. Um, I agree, it is a beautiful area. Um, all the lots, though, aren't large. There's some lots down north on this road that are only 66 feet wide, and right to the south of us are 8,000, and behind us are 10s. But it is a beautiful area, and the trees, and it, it just has a feeling. And that's what, uh, when we come and looked at the property that they were selling, that's what drove us to the area, is to try to do something nice in, in West Valley with some upper-end homes. So, it is gonna be a change, whether it's left half acres, or whether we get estate lots. Um, but we did meet with the neighborhood, and we met with the people east of us. And, and whether there was a petition or not, there's been about 15 or 20 people in favor of it at the two previous public hearings, the planning commission and the last city council meeting. So, the neighborhood, and after reviewing the plans, they, they see the, they see the vision that we see. Um, there's a couple that do not, but we, and we respect that. But we just think leaving a half acre doesn't give us the flexibility to do as good as design. It pretty much ma, means that four homes are gonna face the road. They're all 100 feet wide. There could be some more homes in the back, depending on how, how we design it. But, you know, it just, it lines up four homes, and by the time they put in fences, it just walls it all off. And we think that we've thought out a nice plan that preserves the, some of the characteristics, and we know it is gonna be changed. But we, we think it's all about preserving the trees, and we really think good planning and having an open field is what's gonna preserve it, or anything. And it's about the sightlines that we're trying to create. And when you are in 5450, or if you live across, it's not just gonna be a wall. So, um, you know, you can, you have open areas that you can see. And we've done that with the fencing, and the way the house lays out, and the way the circle lays out, and preserving the old homes. So, we think it's a good plan. We think, we think it's better than the plans we've all looked at, leaving the zoning the way it is, so. Uh, if you have any questions, I could answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Kelly Bertos. These people are speaking. I know this area, area. I know it is Marshall Street. I grew up there, too. I can tell you all the people from 35th all the way up there, because I know them. I ran around with their kids. Lee Evans bolded my life as a kid, as a little kid at the mountain riders club, telling programs. Christopher, I mean, it is a small family. That's the old hunter it was, and that's what that street was. It is a beautiful street. It is a beautiful area. I just hope for the sake of these people, you don't allow what happened next door to another family member that was just like this, that grew up there, was the Latham family, when you split their house and sold a half acre lot, or a smaller than a half acre lot, and let them split this up on my area. What happened to me shouldn't have happened. And I hope for their sake, this never happens to them. You know, we, it is a small community. Even though it's grown over to here, we out west, our family, we grew up running around with each other. So, please, take consideration of all of them, but do not ruin what happened to my neighborhood. What you guys allowed there was horrible. Please don't let it happen on this street. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? See no further people wanting to speak? I'll close the public hearing portion, and we'll bring it back to the council.
All right. I have a comment I'd like to make as we get into our discussion. I'd just like to point out that in a city of 35 square miles, this 3.2 acre parcel has received a lot of discussion and consideration and thought over the last almost half year. And although we may not agree, and we may not vote the same, we may have different reasons for however we vote, I want everybody to understand that this has been duly considered, and it is incumbent upon us to make a decision as we see fit for the betterment of the entire city. And that we have, that we, I think each of us takes that responsibility seriously.
Any other comments?
I would just like to say that, um, over the last two years, we have reconsidered our building standards. We have changed, um, to the RE zone, which these, this subdivision, if approved, would be an average lot size of 15,000 square feet. We're no longer allowing the 8,000, 10,000 square foot lots. So, this cul-de-sac would have, um, depending on how the plot is laid out, four homes along the front, three homes along the front, and then some in the rear, which is a benefit to sometimes the property owner, our usage of water, and that we don't get the junk piled in the back of really deep lots. So, um, I see this development as a good move for this street, that it's not, um, it's not gonna be horse property anymore. Um, that's not always what people want. And we do have zones that are definitely gonna stay horse property. But I see with the size of the lots and the standards we've put on the houses, there's not gonna be just a stucco sidewall. There's gonna be brick and stone and hardy board, and the level and the standard for these houses are gonna be far better than what we've had in the past. So, as far as what we've done to change the RE zone, I think it's a good move for properties like this.
And I would, I appreciate those comments. I would note again that we do not have a plan or a subdivision before us tonight. That is not part of what we're considering. Although some ideas have been presented, that is not part of our vote or approval tonight.
So, let me see if I can state this correctly. And Councilman Guler will help me, he keeps me on track. First, if we leave it as is, it can be developed. First, if we leave it as is, it can be developed and it will be half acre lots, two homes per acre. And they can do that if we take no action. That is allowed under current policy. So that's one option. The other option is they've requested a change from agriculture to RE. Under that scenario, we can do two point, I guess it's...
Up to three.
Well, not quite three, just a little under three per acre. So it's just slightly higher and if we approve that zoning change to RE, they can develop a few more houses on that property, 3.2 acres, I think. Yeah. So the difference is two or three homes on there, on that piece of property. And Councilman Bueller is correct. We, once we approve that zoning change, then they can develop that and they can come back and if they meet the requirements that are already in our ordinance, then they can develop those homes. If they build them to the requirements we have put in place with the materials that we've required at the size, the frontage, so forth, then they can do that. And that can take many different forms. Of course, you have to have access, but there have been talk, you know, about the trees. There's been talk about a lot of different things, but those aren't specifically in our ordinance. We certainly could put additional requirements there, but under the way that works, those are basically our two options. They can come in and request changes to that when they come forward, which may or may not be approved. For example, the stucco, different things like that. But whether we do that is a separate issue, but if we approve the zoning change, if they meet the requirements, they can build and we have no way to, really, to stop that. So that's really kind of the difference as I see it, either keep it as it is, half acre lots, or allow them to go to RE, which would allow 15,000 square foot lots, which would add a few more homes to it. So really tonight, that's all we're planning on doing.
I agree, Mayor. With the, without changing the zoning, they could potentially, as I see it, build six houses with two being flat lots with very long stems. With the change of zoning, they could probably put seven in there, maybe eight. But we have three issues. One is the general plan designation, which just has to be changed. We change that all the time if we're going to change the zoning. The second would be changing it to the residential estate zone. The third is the development agreement, which would allow them to then proceed. If the general plan change and the zoning is changed, I would not favor accepting the development agreement at this time because then it is out of our hands and we have, even though we haven't seen a zone or a plat map, we have essentially approved development in accordance with the development agreement. I would rather see that development agreement when we see the plat, so that we have, we maintain control and consider that development agreement at that time. And that's restating what I said last week and that's how I would consider the resolution should the ordinances pass.
Well, let me clarify. If we approve both the general plan change and the change of zoning and not the development agreement and it's zoned RE, they can still develop that property and build homes there, can't they? If they meet all the requirements.
Under the current zoning, is that your question?
No, under RE.
Yeah. What I'd like to do, given the question that happened last week and the reiteration of that and your attempting to gain a better and clearer understanding of what exactly would happen to the options, is let the two experts that are here that can walk you through that have some time at the mic to explain this, so that'd be Ms. Cottrell and Mr., sorry, Steve and Mr. Pastore.
Okay. The council, okay with that?
Yes.
Who first?
Steve.
And he's going to keep that microphone close.
We'll take. How's that? So for development agreement, actually, our code requires on a zone change for a residential development that we actually include a development agreement. So that's actually a requirement in the code. And so my recommendation would be that if the council is, wants to approve the zone change, that we approve the development agreement. It can be different than what's proposed this evening, but that there be a development agreement approved with the zone change because of the code.
So we could just say that the development agreement would be that they build according to standards and ordinances that we have in place now?
That's, that's correct.
Which is different than the development agreement that's been proposed?
Correct.
And then when they brought the plat, they could ask for an amendment to the development agreement if they want to build accordance with this development agreement or a new development agreement?
They could do that, yes.
And again, the way that I'm seeing it is they want us to approve the development agreement because they want to build it differently and I would see them coming back with that, but we could then see the plat at that time. And of course, they would be free to develop according to what's on the books if the zoning is changed, but that's not what they're wanting to do. So I would expect they would come back and say, "This is what we want to do now. This is our plat and we could approve that altogether." But you're right, Mayor. They can build now and if we change the zoning, they could build then in accordance with the rules that govern that zone.
Yeah.
If I may clarify, most of the standards in the development agreement would actually be a step above what's in our code or something that's not addressed in the code. So the items that are actual exceptions, if you will, would be, there's, and this is in your Exhibit B. So item number nine, which is allowing it to two lots to have a reduced width, so that would be an exception. Number 10 would be just recognizing the existing home that's on, that's on the property and allowing the rear setback of that home to be reduced. As I go through the rest of this, there's also the 10% that Mr. Olson mentioned, which is something that, well, hasn't been adopted yet. The council's discussed as a possible option for 10% stucco, but that would be another exception. But as I go through the rest of them, like requiring three car garage and having at least 30% of brick and stone on the front are things that are actually would be a step above what's, what's actually in the code or matching the code.
So the square footage is the same. What about the flat roof?
So that one, that one I would say is, is meant to be more of an accent, but that one is, would be an exception. I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Olson, but I would think that that's something that's not a make or break item for the development agreement, just in our conversations and so.
If I understand that correctly, then, and if we did, as you say, take the, approve the development agreement, but with current requirements, there are things that we would gain, but there are also things we would lose.
Right. That's what I'm hearing as well.
Yeah.
Of course, we could approve the development agreement with the amendment that it not, that the setbacks and the frontage not be changed. And then they would build according to that or come back with a new development agreement when they bring the plat. So we would keep everything that we gain and not yet lose anything.
But if they bring a plat that's acceptable to us, then we'd be willing to give in on their exceptions that they're requesting?
Obviously, we would consider it then. I mean, if that doesn't come back for several years, we might not all be here, but we can't guarantee an approval in the future. We might think differently then, but we would certainly have an opportunity to review it at that time.
Anything else or any more questions? Is that enough background information for us?
Well, I'm willing to take the first step then and move for approval of ordinance 18-03, which is an amendment to the general plan.
Second. Properly before us, any further comment? Seeing no further comment. Then we go to our Assistant City Recorder for the roll call vote as required by state law.
Councilman Fatise Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lane?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Norveld?
No.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority.
Back in the hands of the council.
I would move for approval of ordinance 18-04, allowing the RE zone.
Properly before us, any further discussion before we go into the vote?
Councilman Fatise Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lane?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Norveld?
No.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes by majority.
May need a little help on this procedurally. I would move, if proper, for approval of Resolution 1815, the development agreement with the amendment that it not include changes to frontage or setbacks as proposed in the agreement.
So that would be to eliminate item nine and item 10?
Yes, eliminating items nine to 10.
I can second that.
So your motion would leave in some of the other changes that they requested?
Be one through eight.
I'm looking at the wrong one. Mine isn't that way. I'm looking on the website.
It's Exhibit B, Development Standards.
I'm looking at the website, so I don't have it as the, it's under a different name. Maybe someone help me with that. Well, I'm looking on the website rather than on our agenda to go or whatever. Which one is it under the website?
Oh, the item number?
Yeah. Well, no, it's not an item number. They're just by names. Oh, they've got it here for me. Well, let me just take a quick look at that.
So it leaves in the grade texture on the garage doors, the minimum lot or house size, which is per our standards anyway?
And that they can do eight lots?
No, it doesn't say how many lots.
No. No, eight homes. Well, that's what number...
Well, it says the maximum, but they have to be able to fit those in without changing the frontage or the width of the lot, without changing the width of the lots.
If they can do that, then they can have eight.
Correct. They have to figure out a width.
But they could figure it out without changing...
This is where you're going to see something creative with flat lots.
Well, we'll see what they bring back, right?
Okay.
Although now it was two flat lots.
So the flat roof, the stucco, and the minimum landscaping, three car garage, minimum of 1,700 square feet finished on two-story homes, 30% of front facing shall be brick or stone, all foundation walls 18 inches above grade and garage doors to be grained texture. So those are okay. And I'm just doing that more for clarification. Then the two that would not be included in the development agreement, nine and 10, is the width and, the exception to the width and the setback.
Right. That's the motion.
Okay. Thank you for sending that over. That made it easy to do. I may have to go back to my iPad instead of my website computer. With that, let's see, the motion was made and seconded. Okay. So any further discussion? We've seen, oh...
Just from a clarification standpoint, Mayor, and it's just a restate for our purposes and make sure everybody understood. So in essence, as you described it more at length, it's approval for the development grant with the deletion of items nine and 10.
Yes. Okay. That's a simple way of putting it. But it was nice to go through and...
Absolutely.
Especially for a record and those at home who probably like me are trying to find that document on. And that's one of the reasons I do that, see what everyone at home is looking at. With that, then, to our Assistant City Recorder.
Councilman Fatise Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lane?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Norveld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. With that, then, we go to the next item on our agenda, which is resolutions. We look at Resolution 18-37. This is to approve an agreement between the city and Clint Drake to provide employee discipline hearing officer services to our city. Has done it in the past. It's done on a fee per event. So if hearings are held, there's payment made. If not, no. And we don't have a lot of them. This works out well for the city to be, have a consultant to be able to come in and do those on a fee per event basis. That is the issue before us. To the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 18-37.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion?
Just a clarification, although it is per event, it's a per hour fee.
Yes. Sorry. And since you've got it there, the fee per hour is?
I don't know.
Oh. Your donors. Thought you were reading from a script there, so.
Okay.
Nope. Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Fatise Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lane?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Norveld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we go to item nine on our agenda, the consent part of our agenda. We have two resolutions there. Resolution 18-38, and that's for a right-of-way contract and temporary construction easement. This is at 3974 South 6400 West in conjunction with the replacement of the bridge there. The work that's being done. Resolution 18-39, very close to that, same thing, right-of-way, temporary construction easement, this one at 3950 South 6400 West. That's our consent agenda. To the council.
Mayor, move for approval of the two items on the consent agenda.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Fatise Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lane?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Norveld?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That completes our regular agenda, but we will need a motion now. We are going to go into a closed session for the purpose of discussing professional competency, which we're allowed to do so by law.
Sorry, Mayor, it's under the litigation.
Oh, it's under litigation. Okay, sorry. Litigation.
I believe it...
Pending or imminent litigation.
Reasonably imminent litigation.
Pending or imminent litigation. Okay. That's what we're doing. So I need a motion for that. The motion, though, will be that we, we go into closed session and then adjourn, taking no further action because there will be nothing else discussed. So no one will be misout on anything if you leave.
Mayor, could we also amend that motion to start in, say, 10 minutes so we can take time to talk with this one scout that had one question for him?
Oh, yes. That's right. Everyone's okay with that? Yes.
Does that motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. And let's see, this one, I guess we could do by voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Those opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. In 10 minutes, our closed session will start. Then we'll adjourn with no further business other than discussing eminent litigation.